It's kind of in the middle of state, in the middle of nowhere. Lots of companies.
Well, that's West River, sort of street, I mean if there are companies.
I don't really know them very well.
Do they call it ranchers?
Yep, ranchers. So is that west or east of state?
That's West River.
It was a ranch show, ranchers.
Okay. Call this meeting to order. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on, roll call, please.
Brooks.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Housman.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
McInerney.
Wells.
Here.
Mayor Beasley.
Here. All right, we have a quorum, so we can move on to item three, the approval of the agenda as printed before. Motion from Jones, second by Fish, to approve the agenda for tonight. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item four, we have the minutes of the June 1st briefing and the June 5th regular council meeting in front of us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Jones, second by Brooks, to approve the minutes of those two meetings. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on, item five, we have the approval of the claims found on 12, 13, and 14 for June 19th.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor.
I have a motion from Housman, second by Wells, to approve the claims. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we are going to move on to our visitors and timed items, a public hearing. We have a public hearing to consider a retail on-off sale malt beverage license to La Finca, I hope I said that right, Incorporated, for El Tequila, Mexican restaurant on Split Rock Boulevard. Can we combine the beer and, and then we also have an on-off sale wine license for the same location. Anybody here to talk about that today?
Brian, did they just want beer and wine, or did they ask for a liquor license, or they inquire about one?
I did not talk to them. I think they might have inquired, but I did not talk to them, so they just applied for beer and wine.
Okay, so we're not sure if they actually didn't want to go with the price of it, or what, so.
P and Z approved this conditional use at the last planning and zoning meeting, and she was at the meeting, and that was not discussed.
Well, we're excited to have them at town here, and I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Jones, second by Wells, to approve the two, the malt beverage and the wine license to the Mexican restaurant on Split Rock Boulevard. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Do we know when they open? Can't read.
Okay. Our next public hearing is to consider a one-day malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License for Auto Mania on June 30th, 2017, from the Brandon Lions Club and Brandon Liquors. Anybody here to address that? Bill's running late. I know that's coming, coming back in the resolutions in, in, number 10.
Number 10 D.
Yeah. But these, these are, one is a volunteer club and one is a, a business.
Sorry.
A motion from Jones, second from Brooks, to approve these one-day malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License to these two groups. Questions or discussion?
I have a question. How is this gonna work? I mean, do they, I guess maybe we should ask him, but are they gonna get, reap the benefits from it, Dennis? Are you gonna reap the benefits from the?
We're strictly getting a fee for, for selling. The fee's a $750. We don't get any cut of any, what we sell. We could sell nothing and still get the fee. Well, I wouldn't think. It'd be as if we sold nothing, but, but that's what the agreement is. Yep. That's what we're getting paid to sell.
All right. Was there trouble, but you had trouble last year with it?
We didn't have any trouble. We just didn't make any money. We got paid. I think it was $143 for the hours we put in. They said it wasn't worth it, so this year we, he was, he approached us again and they said, we're gonna have to have, it's at least gonna be worth our time, and that was a number that was arrived at. I was not in negotiations, but I am a Lion, and that's what the agreement was.
So, Brandon Liquor, it's Chad Paget, is that Sunshine then, or?
Yes.
That's Sunshine, okay.
You guys are okay with it? I just, I have a problem with it, just because the fact that you guys kinda got, you know, excuse my language, but I word screwed last year. And I have a problem with our nonprofits having issues with that, and this isn't the first year it's happened with their nonprofits. So, I'm really having a hard time, and then he's not here to explain himself, so.
It was, it was discussed thoroughly at our meeting, and they all agreed if we'll take another chance, so.
I'm not part of the Lions prop, but if you guys decide you wanna do it, I guess that's up to you, but God bless.
I think they all knew what we were getting into, so.
Any other questions, discussion? Don, I have a motion and a second to approve the one-day malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License on June 30th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Anybody else? That's not on the agenda?
I have a question for visitors.
Yes.
I'd like to speak.
You have five minutes.
My name is Matt Henning, and I've been a homeowner of the Eagle Creek Development for seven years. I've seen the Eagle Creek Development fill up as, since we've moved in, and I've noticed recently there's been a lot of accidents at that intersection of Sandstone and Holly Boulevard. I noticed that it's on the, uh, street committee discussion. I just urged the council to, uh, do something about that intersection. I don't know what options are available. I know when the intersection, I believe it was Heritage and Holly Boulevard by Sioux Valley Energy was done, Brian Reed was there, and we were, people in attendance were told that, the city was in negotiations to extend Meadowbrook Trail to the Bluffs, so that we would have access to a controlled intersection. Since then, I have not seen anything done by the council, so I just, I would, I would like the council to have a good discussion about it tonight and put together some plan as to talk about what's gonna be done, because I was, I was fortunate enough to be a witness to an accident. A car came flying by, and luckily he only clipped the, the car behind me. He clipped it in the back corner. If he'd have clipped it, or if he'd have hit it head-on, he'd have shoved the car right into the, to mine. Pulling into my development, if I'm not hugging the center line and allowing people to illegally pass on the right, I've been flipped off. So, I just think that's a dangerous intersection. I think something needs to be done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could interject, Mayor.
Yes.
There was thorough discussion about Meadowbrook Trail, and I was a huge proponent for that. I pushed for it very, very hard. The consensus of the council was not to continue moving forward with that, and due to my better judgment, it was dropped. So, I would look forward to opening that discussion again.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Why was, why did the council feel that it needed to be dropped?
Because it was very complex, and it had to deal with the developer and the original plating of that property out there.
So, what, what happened to the original plan? Obviously, my understanding was the original plan was, uh, Sandstone Avenue was supposed to go.
Can you come back up to the mic?
I guess what happened to the original plan, my understanding was, is Sandstone Avenue, our Creekside Circle, was supposed to go all the way to the Bluffs, and then somehow that plan got dropped and houses got built at the end of the cul-de-sac, so, I, I mean, that's, that's where I, I have big concerns as to.
That is exactly what happened. It was replatted. The developer put houses in there. Once the replat went through, it did not have to be approved, and that was done on his own. And that's when I came back and, and cried foul, because we were putting that controlled intersection in there, because you're in my district.
Yep.
I understand where you guys are at, and I fought very, very hard for that.
And I appreciate that.
But what it really boiled down to was dollars.
Yep.
And they weren't willing to fight the fight, so I was outvoted, and it was dropped.
I, I just, I just think somebody is gonna get seriously hurt at that intersection, and something needs to be done, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Anybody else?
So, I'll add to that. We, we, first of all, I wanna thank you for coming and, and speaking up about it, because we, although I'm new to the council, we spoke about, I, I was not involved in anything before, but I've, I've spent some time discussing this with several people in the last two weeks. We, we talked about as far as extending that street. So, the options are, right, to extend the street, to put in a, a flashing light, to put in a turn lane, to put in a, a traffic light. I think extending that street, we discussed, and I agree, maybe I'm wrong, I agree with this. I think if you extend the street into the Bluffs neighborhood, people are, most people are still gonna take the path of least resistance. They're not gonna travel upward into the Bluffs if they're coming, you know, to, to Brandon. And I think it was John, John McInerney that brought that up, and, and I agree with it. I, I think that's probably, probably correct. So, what are the other options? A flashing light. Would a flashing light help? Personally, I, I think it, I think it would. You know, a flashing light gets my attention. Would it solve all the problems? Probably not. So now, so now what? What do we have? A, a turn lane, or a turning lane, going both, from both directions. That, that is great in theory, and maybe it will be great on paper, but that's something that I think we're all kind of discussing now, and, and I've, I've met with several people in the last two weeks talking about that. Unfortunately, it's, it's more involved than just it, than it sounds, because if, if we put a turning lane in, my understanding is that, that is, of course, it's a county road, they're gonna make us take over that road all the way back to Brandon, and that's a huge chunk of money, including a portion of the bridge. So, in theory, that's the best, in my opinion, the best solution, you know? But I think we've got a lot of, a lot of discussing to do on that, because it is a, a large chunk of money. You know, again, my understanding, I brought the question up, how many, how many lots are left in that subdivision? In other words, how much more growth is that subdivision gonna see right now? There's, there's not a lot left.
Unless the developer expands the.
Right, and that, that.
Development.
Right.
All of the lots are full.
Right. And so, my, my point behind that is, I think that eventually that land will be developed, especially to the east, at which point there's definitely going to be something needed there, you know? So, I, I, I wanna, I just wanna take the time to say, I appreciate you coming. I appreciate you coming the other week. If I lived there, I'd be, I'd be doing the same thing. I, I, I am 110% on your side on this. If you have any questions, and if there's anything I can do, feel free to email me. In the meantime, I'm gonna explore the options, 'cause I think that there's something that could be done, so.
Thank you, Don. I wanna say thank you for coming forward, because I haven't had a lot of support here. I will tell you that that original development, the traffic study that was done in that, in that original development had that connecting road. And we're dealing with the issues that we're dealing with today, because that connecting road was taken out, and there was a traffic device put at Heritage. So, we travel, well, a number of us, I certainly travel that road many times a day. I see the traffic problems. I see what's going on, and it is, it is a dangerous intersection. I think there's a lot of ways to look at it, but I think it really truly boils down to the original plat, in fact, that that was not followed.
Yes.
I'd like to expand on this, 'cause.
Please state your name for me, please.
Mark Rektinbaum. I live in the Creekside Development for 11 years.
Thank you, sir.
I have, from Steve Van Busskerd himself, and what he said at the time, Meadowbrook Trail on this plat is through there. He told me personally, at that time, he was putting that street through when that light got put in out on Heritage. So, why would we try to bill us for it and not the guy that made all the money? That's what I wanna know. If you'd like to look at it, you can. If I can go to a turn lane at Heritage and have a light and get in there and not get rear-ended, I will do that. You're correct. If we go out and we head east, that's never a problem. It's when we're coming back from Brandon. We need something to stay out of the people that don't slow down. So, if we can go up to that, turn in there, and come back in our development, it's not out of the way. It's not a problem. It's safety.
Ma'am, can you come up, can you come up to the?
Yeah, Kami Gladys, I was the one who spoke two weeks ago. I just, I agree with the path of least resistance theory, that people coming from Brandon will turn, probably still to, you know, come into our development, but it's very difficult to get out of our development, and that's where finishing Meadowbrook Trail would keep a lot of people safe. If it's slippery, you have no traction to get out, and Rice Street is horrible for being cleared off, which goes to the county being, not taking care of the road, which, you said, you know, it would be expensive and stuff, but I think that would be beneficial to Brandon to buy that portion, because there's a lot of people traveling that road, and it's horrible in the winter. I'm constantly hearing about people complaining about how dangerous it is, so, I mean, that's another thing to consider in all this discussion, is that that might help.
I, thank you, and I don't wanna get hung up on the path of least resistance. I, I say that, I don't, you know.
Wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I mean, adults would, would probably make the better decision. It's the teenagers that would go the shortest route, you know? But, just for my education purpose, I don't live in the neighborhood, so I don't know what you face, and I, I don't wanna take much time. But what is the most difficult time of day, and, you know, how, how many cars are backed up? How long does it take, that kinda thing, to get out? But in or out of your neighborhood, whatever is the most difficult for you. I just wanna know for my.
Well, there's other people here, too, and we all leave at different times of the day, but I know 7:30 to 8:00 is a very busy time, and then, you know, people leaving and coming from work, so, and then 5:00 to probably even 6:00 o'clock. Even when I came here, it was still really busy just to turn right to come into Brandon. So, it's not, it's, you know, the main commuting hours are the hardest time to get in and out. And the time that I would for sure take that light instead of going to that turn. So, and yeah, you can, I mean, especially in the mornings, I know you can wait. I mean, I leave a little bit earlier than a lot of people probably do, so maybe somebody else could speak, but I think you could probably wait five to 10 minutes, depending on what time of, you're trying to get out. Am I right, wrong? Anybody else? Come later. Yeah, you can get out if you're going away, and, you know, cutting in front of somebody, but.
We, we are, we've got this on the agenda. And we're well over the five minutes. Item seven, golf course. I see Zane and Kelly back there.
Yep. Okay. Well, Kelly and I wanted to come to the council to give you a little update on our little cart path project that we've been doing for the last couple of years here. But I, I wanted to hand out you a map of the course, 'cause it's kinda difficult to explain unless you have it in front of you, so. All right. Okay, well, if you look at this, it's got a map of the golf course. If you see all the, the cart paths that are drawn in black, that's basically what's been completed thus far. And that, if you add all that up, it's about 4,200 linear feet. The areas in red are what we still have to complete in our priority master plan. And if you look at that, we still have about 1,895 feet to complete. So far, we've raised $62,000, I believe, and then we've done all the work in-house, so I think Christina said we still have $5,700 left for, to spend. So, we, Kelly and I talked. We would like to, if we can, get holes seven, eight, seven green to eight tee box, and eight green to nine tee box completed before the state tournament, which is the second weekend in August. So, we're only, we're $3,000 short to complete that, so it would be kinda nice to have that done before then. We still have number four to do. That's another 800 feet. And if we included that, along with the, on the very bottom, there, just on the bottom of, below number 10 tee, there's another 200 feet. So, if we did it all, we would be about 11,000 short, and we're still keeping in mind, you know, raising funds, and we're still making an effort through the golf committee to sell, you know, our bricks and our big granite rocks, so, so we're still trying to raise the funds for it, but I guess I wanna get some direction from the council, what, what your thoughts were and how we should proceed, since we got 5,700 left.
So, with the 5,700, you still need 11?
Well, that's to complete everything.
That's to do everything.
Yeah, I mean, like Kelly and I talked, the priority would be, like I said, seven green to eight tee box, that's 530 feet. And then, if you look over from eight green to nine tee box, that's 365 feet, so.
Those are your two main priorities.
Them are the two main priorities. I mean, it'd be nice to get it all done, but, 'cause the, the par, the part, number four is the only par three that's not completed the whole way, so. All the other par threes got cart paths the entire way. You can see we got 460 feet of number four done already, so.
So, the 5,700 plus, which you guys have from raising, plus the 3,000, would get you the two sections you're talking about now?
Correct.
Wanting to do.
Right.
I assume before the tournament, is that what?
Correct, yeah, and we're starting to, that's kinda, you know, why we wanted to get some input from the council, 'cause we're getting crunch time here. We ain't got a lot of time left here, so, and we're real busy right now with outings and tournaments, and, so.
Brian, what does our contingency budget look like right now?
We haven't, we haven't spent any out of there, out of the contingency budget yet. But you can't, you can't make any transfers or, or approval, anything over and above what's budgeted yet. We didn't have this on the agenda. So, you'll have to wait to authorize anything over more than the 5,600 till the July 3rd council meeting.
I mean, if we sell one more granite rock, we got it made for what we wanna do.
Put the call out there.
Right. Well, we, we already have, one of our committee members has already got a couple contacts, so, but I just wanted to let you all know.
I'll take a rock.
Oh, there you go.
Perfect.
Thank you, Justin.
Yeah, thank you.
Keep in, and he is in charge of the contractors outing as well, so.
Good.
They bring a lot of people to the course.
Perfect.
So, we're good then?
You want these back?
You're one heck of a pro, but maybe you oughta go into sales.
But, but then, but then, we're still a little short if we wanna do it all. So, we could put that on the agenda.
If we get that rock, we'd be probably seven short.
So, we do at least put it on the agenda and see next time?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay.
Anything else?
Other than that, I just wanted to recognize Kelly for the excellent job he's doing. The course is in probably the best shape I've ever seen it, and I've been here 21 years, so.
It has been good.
Thank you.
Nice.
Zane, I wanna recognize you guys. I, I said this the other day. I think, and I say this, I'm not a golfer. I don't know Zane, but I spent some time, couple hours with him here a couple weeks ago. He showed me around, showed me what they did, and I think that they've done a tremendous job, and they've done it all out of their own pocket, and I think that needs to be recognized.
Yeah, yes.
I'm very, I'm very appreciative of that, and I'm not a golfer, so I, I just, I just wanna go on the record and, and, and mention that.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. To the microphone, please. Purple button, there you go.
There you go. Mr. Mayor, my name is Jared Johnson, and I wasn't sure if, if there's time for comments pertaining to item number 10C, if that was something you'd like us to bring up before the golf course report, or if there's something that I can hold comment to until after we hear the discussion on item 10C.
Yep, after.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Anything else, golf? All right, moving on. Police, we have an officer who has completed his certification. Back from peer. He's official.
Andrew, yeah, Andrew Baker is officially certified. He's completing the last of his field training now, and the agreement was that when he attained his certification, that we would be moving him up to line 27, step one.
Sounds good.
Yes, we do. A motion from Housman, second, Wells, to approve the pay raise for Officer Baker, has he completed his law enforcement classes? Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, police chief?
I have no rocks to sell, so. Those are gone.
All right, thank you very much. Item nine, parking rec. We have the maintenance report in front of us. Imagine as we are into June, we have a lot of activity going on.
Mayor, I have something for the parking rec. I remember I text, anyway, there was a parking incident down there last week at Aspen Park that they parked three, three wide. Is there anything that we're doing to stop that?
There isn't. We've chalked parking spaces. They disappear rather quickly during a tournament. There's not much we can do. I don't think it's a good idea to put fence posts in the middle of a parking lot with limited lighting. You know, until we pave it, there's really not much we can do to control parking down there.
So, just, I mean, they called the police, and so the police went down, and is that what they should do? Yeah, 'cause they parked three, you know, instead of parking two, they parked three, which I think is really stupid, but.
And I will say, historically, even when we did chalk it, they didn't follow it. I mean, it's just, it's truly a common sense situation, and that's not something you can teach.
I know one gal that was parked in the middle, and she had to have somebody come and pick her up, take her home. The act was good and get out. and pick her up, take her home, the act was good and get out, so.
All right. Anything else, parking wreck?
That's your committee.
Uh, we have a meeting in a couple weeks, we'll have a report after that.
All right, thank you. Item ten A, we have the twenty-seventeen cert team. And this is just for insurance purposes only, because if they get called into action.
Correct, they're volunteers, so we, we name them in the, list their names in the minutes, so that if there is an accident, they will be covered by our coverage.
Uh, second, do they have to go through training every year?
They do. I'm not sure, I'm not, they don't have to.
Oh.
There's nothing required.
I was just wondering, okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the twenty-seventeen cert team. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have a desk set that is, from the chamber office, that is appraisal, but I have one member missing.
Yeah, this is the old reception desk at the Brandon Chamber. They gave it to us, we don't have any use for it. Oh.
I got a blank spot. Well, no, it's listed, those two.
That's fine, we just cross out John's name and.
And have somebody else sign it?
Have somebody else do it.
All right.
Recommendation call, to classify it as.
Put your name underneath that.
Ex, or surplus.
Surplus.
With a value of less than five hundred dollars.
So put four ninety-nine for me, four ninety-nine.
Um, I'll make a motion to declare that surplus.
A motion from Hausmann, second by Brooks to declare it surplus, with Hausmann, Fish, and Wells as the signatures to declare it. Any questions or discussion? It's listed at four ninety-nine.
Well, it's not a five hundred.
Let's below five hundred. With that being said, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And we do have a bid from Brandon Lutheran Church to purchase that desk.
Okay.
Can we just do that now?
Yep, if you want to, for twenty-five dollars.
Make a motion to accept the bid for twenty-five bucks.
I have a motion from Jones, second by Hausmann to accept the bid from Brandon Lutheran to purchase said desk set. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item C, discussion on Ellis Eastern's opening rail line through Brandon. Well, but he's listed as D.
You guys have this in wrong.
You have A, B, D, C.
Oh, okay. That's how I spell it.
Yeah.
Paul Sando and I met with Clark Myers and Billy Polama from Ellison Eastern and Concrete Materials, they updated us on their plans for expansion of, A, their facility north of Corson, and also, and also the expansion and operation of the rail line through Brandon, as far as their facility north of Corson, they are planning on opening up a quartzite mine north of their existing sand facility, and that should be operational in the next five to seven years. They will also increase their sand mine in the next few years. Result here in town, you know, the number of rail cars from that facility to their facility on the west side of Sioux Falls will increase up to about, up to sixty cars a day. They won't be going through town, they'll be on the BN line, so really the only conflict they will have is at the crossing on Holly Rice. So that's about it for that. As far as the rail line through town, they are currently working on upgrading that. They purchased the Southern Minnesota Railway, which runs from Manly, Minnesota to Worthington, Minnesota. It's operated, has a link to the Union Pacific Line. That would be the only line in South Dakota linked to the UP. Everything else, I believe, is BN. They are looking at, they are currently working on the trestle over the Big Sioux. I'm not sure if they're done, they started working on that about a week, ten days ago, so they're going to upgrade that. They are then going to continue coming south through town, upgrading their rail lines through town. Primarily, they're going to work on the siding by their lumber, lumberyard, they'll need to upgrade that. Their plan is, what they indicated us was, that they will begin storing rail cars on that line, at least west of the Big Sioux River, fairly soon, and then they will start storing cars in town, down to Aspen Park in the near future. They will continue upgrading the tracks from here to Manly over the next two to three years, at which time they will open up the tracks for operation. They do not have a, an estimate as to what the rail traffic would be at this point in time.
Do, do we have any control about them storing cars in town? I mean, I don't want cars stored in town.
Not really, no.
Do an injunction or something? I mean, goodness, it's not what we want our town to look like.
Very limited.
And I think everyone in this room would agree with you, but I think also historically, we know the power of the railroad, as we've tried to move into discussion with them in the past. I'm not saying it would be a complete zero, but I would say it's probably pretty close. They have, they have the power to do what they want to do with their rail. I agree with you, that's, you know, it's not been abandoned, but considered as, we would consider it abandoned for years and years and years, but we've asked them to abandon that rail, and they've refused to do so. Now we know why. So, and now, I guess I'll ask Brian, but we don't have a leg to stand on, do we?
Very little, I mean, unfortunately, the railroad pre-exists the city, so their easement goes back to the late eighteen hundreds, I believe. So we do not control the railroads, that's controlled by the state of South Dakota and the feds. We can take a look at some things you see every once in a while, restrictions of blocking streets, we can take a look at that.
Because when was the last time that was used?
Nineteen ninety-one or ninety-two.
Oh, really? Was that, yeah, I know they have to do it once a year, but.
And that's what Ellison Eastern told us, was ninety-one or ninety-two was the last time a train used it.
Aren't they going to have to do a lot of work on it?
That's what they're doing right now, according to the report, is that they, they're taking section by section and trying to do clearing trees and brush and restoring their, their line. Unfortunately, that comes right through the middle of our town.
And if it is going to connect to the UP like they say, it has true value to them.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Now we're up.
There you go. Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jared Johnson, our family's been just up the road from y'all since eighteen seventy-four, when we settled. Nine months ago, my wife and I purchased a home in Brandon, six oh one South Main. We're three homes away from the lumberyard on the east side of the tracks. We bought that home last year, we were told by our Realtor, who is a person that has to, you know, basically tell the truth because of the, of the issues of disclosure and things like that, that the plans for that railroad were for the city of Brandon to go and make a bike path out of it. My questions to you guys are, number one, what was the plan for that railroad prior to this happening? June eighth, I believe, is when Mr. Reed, I think he was first aware of the fact that they were going to reopen it? So my questions are, prior to that, that moment, what were the city's plans for that rail line?
I can honestly tell you, Jared, that there was never a plan for a bike path there, because the railroad maintained ownership of that and that easement, we've talked to them many times about abandoning that rail, and they've, they've refused to do that. So as far as, and correct me if I'm wrong, but although we feel the same everyone else does in this room, we have no control over that until they would decide to abandon it, and they have never told us that they, that was their thought process.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you another question?
Mm-hmm.
Who owned that property prior to it being built on for homes?
We did.
And then, Mr. Mayor, may I have a follow-up question to that? On the west side, there's a setback of a, we're forty-nine point four seven feet with a, with a twenty-month-old son away from the centerline of that railroad. The question we have is, years ago, there was a setback on the western side, you look at the homes over there, there's a little bit of a distance. So my question is, is what changed between then and now, when those homes were built, I guess? And then finally, Mr. Mayor, if I may, my, my final question is the ballpark. You know, I guess my question was for the, you know, for the amount of infrastructure that went in that ballpark, you know, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, you know, I'm, we've lived next to a railroad our whole life in Corson, I guess, not that close, you know? I'm just, I'm curious as to, you know, when a person bought the home, you know, with all the infrastructure that was going on with the pool and everything else next to the, next to the park, I'm just wondering what the thought process was behind, A, if the city did, if I heard you all right, did own those lots prior to them being built on, then also the city building close to the rails with an unabandoned rail line? I'm just, you know, I'm shocked. And with that, I guess I'll, I'll defer, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess to answer your question to the best of my ability, is there's an easement that the rail puts on every rail line? And, you know, I guess Brian would be able to show you what that easement is, or, or constructing within that easement. We can't build within that easement, and that easement goes all the way down through the park and, and so forth. So as far as what the setbacks were back then, I can't answer that question. You know, a little bit of digging, I think we probably could answer that question for you. But with the easement being what it is, we can't do anything within that easement. As, as Justin would refer back to, because we've been talking about his property down there in a park, and there are so many things that, that go into that, that's the only answer that I can give you tonight, is the development was outside the easement, as far as the setbacks, I can't answer that question for you. As far as what the setbacks were from the west side to the east side.
Just to add on to what he said, do what we built when.
Push purple button, name?
Corey Sitzman.
Thank you.
I live right on the corner of Main and Aspen. When we built, when we purchased the lot and built the home there, that's exactly what we were told, just as he was, that Brandon was putting bike trail through there, the rail line would be torn out.
Can I ask you who told you that?
The developer, and this, I've heard it from, I've been down to City Hall for building permits and everything, and that, every time I've been in there, it's always been the same story, that, oh yeah, we're, we're building the bike trails, the rail line's coming out of there. For, I've been there for ten years now, and it's been the same thing for ten years.
I can honestly tell you that, if you heard that from the city of Brandon, whoever told you that didn't know what they were talking about, because we've never talked about putting a bike trail there, because we would love to acquire that property, we've asked about acquiring that property, and at no time did the rail ever say that they would come in negotiation with us as far as abandoning that rail. We'd like to see it go too, I mean, the Parks, the Parks Department, there are so many things that we'd like to do to beautify that through there, but we've never had the ability to do that.
I just think it's really sad that we've been lied to for ten years on this whole deal.
Well, I guess I, I agree, it is sad, but if we don't know where that information came from, it's very difficult from a, from me sitting on this board up here to take ownership for that line, I don't know where that came from.
Anything else on this rail? Any updates, or will we get more updates from Mr. Meyer and, and?
Yes, Clark Myers indicated that he'd be more than willing to come over to a council meeting to further discuss or at least explain what their plans are. Clark Myers, he's the head of operations for Ellison Eastern.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Yes.
Informing us what's going on, because this is the first.
Yeah, it, it came out of, you know, it's, I, I received a call from a concerned citizen, and then I came in, I went in and talked to Brian, and he said that this was going to come up on this meeting, so I, you know, I knew about it two days, three days before.
And I will reiterate that too, this is a surprise to us too, there was no communication to us that this was coming forward.
Yep.
The city might want to put something out to the rest of Brandon, because there's hundreds of kids that walk that rail line every day.
Oh, yes, yes.
Especially going back and forth to the pool.
Yep, yep. And we have two media outlets here, sitting in our audience, so I'm, I'm sure that will get out, and, and we will also put something on our website, possibly.
Well, you know, I don't think that we should accept defeat, remember when they wanted to put the siding right here by Brandon, and the citizens rose up, the ones basically out at the bluffs?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the switching station.
The switching station, thank you.
I was just going to say, we fought, I mean, they fought that.
We fought, we fought that off, and so, you know, I know they're big brother, but let's not give up hope right away, so, let's, we'll work on it.
There's a little bit of difference.
There's a big difference.
That was the city of Sioux Falls.
We were, we were fighting against the city of Sioux Falls.
We weren't fighting the railroad.
Uh, that issue, so. The only reason I say that, Barb, is because I was the largest proponents, and I was the one that went to the county commission, and I'm the one that said, you know, shame on you for picking on little brother, and so I was deeply involved in that.
But keep in mind, we, we're not going to drop it, let's put it this way, nobody is more on your side than, than.
Than we are.
Than we are, I can promise you that.
Yeah.
I've spent a lot of time discussing this with, uh, my dad is a Realtor, a broker, a developer, and a mayor, and, and I've spent a lot of time on long-distance calls just discussing this issue in the past two weeks, as long as I've known about it. I can promise you, if there's anything I can do, I'll do it. It's, it's not going to get forgot about.
Jared Johnson again, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, one thing I might respectfully request of you folks is to check in the, with the permitting process of this rail being sold and changed in hands. I'm curious with the city attorney, if you all have studied the statute of South Dakota as to what the Railroad Commission would do as far as the approval of the sale of the railroad, and the, and the transfer of ownership to it as well? Just was wondering if that's something that's an option? What purview would the South Dakota Railroad Commission have under an instance like this? My biggest concern is that we're within fifty feet, under fifty feet of the, of the, like, like many others are as well, but I'm just curious to see if that's something that we've looked into, and if we've, since June eighth, if we've seen, you know, what the statute reads about the, the purview of that permit, if, if a person would, and, and I guess that's all I have for now too, so.
Okay. All right. And we will keep everybody updated on, on what's going on with the Ellison Eastern, and I think it would be a good idea to get Mr. Clark and Mr., I can't remember last name, Myers, yeah, Mr. Myers, yep. All right, item D, resolution oh nine seventeen, selling item at Otomania June thirtieth. That be you, Mr. Nelson.
Good evening, folks, thanks for having us this evening. As you well know, this is the sixth year for Otomania Brandon. Uh, we've worked fairly hard, and I think each year we bring tens of thousands of people to the community, that a lot of them have never been here before. A lot of them are from Sioux Falls, smaller towns, they come all the way from Canada, down to Kansas City, Illinois, and out to Colorado, and again, this year we have a nice mix. Couple, do you want me to just kind of go through a few things, what we have in mind has changed this year, is that what you'd like me to do for you, or? William J. Nelson, Bill Nelson. And, you know, one of the things that I want to bring to everybody's attention is that we're pleased that the majority of our volunteers for Otomania Brandon are here from Brandon. Joe is one of my best friends from the area, and we probably have, what, fourteen couples, Joe in our neighborhood, that provide their services and unlimited willingness to come down and do whatever they can do the day of the event and the day before. So we're real happy. So we're real happy with that. We run, you know, forty to fifty volunteers, and we run a lot of people through the community. And, um, you know, unlike Jazz Fest, where they sometimes have a good crowd too, they most of the time, but they run five hundred volunteers. So we do it on a fairly skeleton crew, and it seems to work very well for us. But, uh, we've, uh, we've advertised in a few different venues this year that we normally haven't. We've run a couple, three Sioux Falls magazines. Motor Market has been a good tool for us, the Shopping News does a lot of stuff for us. Uh, we're going some radio stations this next week. Um, we're doing a couple of little things, uh, different this year. We're tightening it up just a little bit. You may have, uh, let them know that we're running from first down to, uh, Highway eleven, and, uh, we'll have one lane pass up to the post office up till five thirty or six o'clock that day to be accommodating for them, then we'll pull it, tie it by the sunshine exit right down there. But, uh, one of the biggest complaints that we have is that it's too long. And, uh, we have moved our stage a block to the east. It's actually right off of Holly now on the middle school driveway, probably twenty feet back from the, uh, right in, right in the, uh, right by the sidewalk area. Get a little bit closer to the road, and I want it all concrete on a windy day, or if you have a little bit of a shower, it gets kind of dirty where we had it before. Um, big, we've had troubles with the bands getting into the facility, um, heavy traffic, they have to go down the middle of our, um, our venue for about a block in the past. We're gonna get away from that, we're gonna have, have them head down and just go right straight across to an intersection, so. Just trying to make it a little bit more accommodating, 'cause, uh, you know, year after year, I think, has everybody been here, has everybody been to Otomania? Everybody in the room? You know, I, and I gotta tell you, one of the more fascinating things to me is, is that, uh, Otomania Brandon, we bring those people in by ourselves. I mean, I think ninety-five percent of the residents of Brandon love the event, I talk to everybody, they really enjoy it, uh, but, you know, we don't do it with the help of the chamber. We don't do it with the help of the local newspaper. We don't ask any media in the local area to do anything special for us, or to, um, you know, Otomania by emails, by magazines, posters, we put a lot of hours in these small towns in our community. You know, we've got ten thousand email addresses that we email to twice a week, now the next two weeks, and we've been doing that pretty consistently. We have just under four hundred cars pre-registered. There is not a car show outside of Minneapolis that has that many cars pre-registered. Back to the fifties, it's huge, but there's no paid event, we're a free one. And Canton, their biggest show, maybe three hundred cars, we have more people pre-registered, and we have more than that always show up at the event that, this has come the day of the event, so. Uh, even last year, a little shower came through, and most of you were there. I think Larry, you were a little scared we wouldn't recover from that. I had a vendor close down, one of the food vendors, and he had said he, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be very busy. We, by five thirty that evening, were head-to-head with people again, until about quarter to ten that night. So Otomania, you know, people know that we're not as typical car show. You know, that's probably, it's not a typical car show you see in these small communities. And, uh, we moved it to Friday, and Friday's one of my favorite days to have it. You might say, why Friday? Um, typically, most folks, parents, young ones, whatever be the case, are very, very busy over the weekends. We have no competition on Friday night for any of the small communities, otherwise you've got Cory Days, you've got, every small community seems to have something going on Saturday and Sunday. So we, we believe Friday is a very valuable day for us. We used to do it on Wednesday in downtown Sioux Falls, and just blew people, people will take the time, it's all free, five grade bands, um, it's a family atmosphere, a lot, you know, we have ten, eleven food vendors, we have twenty or thirty specialty vendors, a lot of stuff for people to see, and a lot of cool cars you just don't see at your typical car show. So...
Sorry?
Yeah, and, you know, last year, we started something, you know, the Brandon Valley School System, they wanted to get, start Vault Mania, and they had a good turnout for that, they get a lot of the extra families in from the, still different communities, and this is their second year for Vault Mania. Matt has done a really good job of fostering on that, and gets a lot of kids involved, a nice family thing to have, so. We are thrilled to, uh, you know, what I meant, we're tying it up a little bit, we're gonna try to utilize a little bit more of the parking, um, you know, closer to that main area. It's always the busiest in that two or three middle block area. And, uh, we believe by tightening up just a little bit, we can make it look like it's even busier yet, and be a little more accommodating for the people that don't want to walk a mile and a half, so. And a little bit easier to see for everybody, so. That is basically, you know, what we're doing this year. We've done a lot of advertising this last couple, three weeks, we're putting a lot of magazines, posters out right now. The community is great for us, we have a ton of Brandon, Sioux Falls, and the smaller communities, their cars are coming in. I had, I couldn't answer my phone, I, customers with me all day today, but I must have fifteen or eighteen calls I missed today about people wanting to know about Otomania, and that will, I can't even answer the calls the last day of the event, I just, I can't. There's that many people that want to come to Brandon. So I believe that Otomania's been really good for Brandon. We get tons of people out here, a great family event, and, uh, we do appreciate, I mean, and you guys have been great, you've supported us immensely, don't misunderstand, I'm just talking about outside of this room. You know, we have pretty much got the people here, and we will continue to do that, so. Um, we're thrilled to be here in the sixth year. I, you know, I, I don't know if you've heard or not, but Sioux Falls is having a very tough time with their downtown events right now. Their residents have grown from, they had a thousand when we were down here, three, four thousand people right now. Hot Summer Nights, which I helped start out twenty-two years ago, is struggling, they're probably gonna move closer to the falls. They had a really tough time getting it done last year. Joe Beckto, or Becktr, is a friend of mine, I've known his folks for years, so. So that's why most of your activities there are moving out of the core area, so. We were fortunate to have you guys, um, you know, give us the okay to have it out here, and, um, it's a great event. Any particular questions that I can answer for anybody?
Well...
Yeah?
Um, and I'm not a part of any of the nonprofits.
Yeah.
You know, I've heard complaints again, you know, from last year. I'm not a part of the nonprofit, other people are, I don't know why, I care so much, but I do.
That's fine.
And to me, I want our nonprofits to profit from this and have a good experience from this. And for that reason, this year, I, I can't support it like I have in the past, and I apologize about that, but I'm tired of the complaints, I guess. And you know, you heard it last year from me, I approved it last year, I said yes last year, this year I'm not going to. Now, with that being said, it, it is a good event, you know, I, there's lots of cars and stuff there, I just, I don't want to hear any more complaints, I guess, and so that's why I...
And I, I appreciate the comments, and we've eliminated majority of these nonprofits for that particular reason. Each year, we seem to have some discrepancies in our funds, where everything, all the accounting is done. My wife and I will no longer accept those. We are like the Lions this year, we're paying them a flat fee right up front, that's all there is to it. So, and that way, there's, that way, they know what they're getting, they know how many people, they can think they have as many people as they want there, and we, we just, and, and all of our members, all of the people that volunteer, you know, it, it, it's just kind of the bottom line, apparently somebody needed it a lot worse than we did. That's what I'm, when I look at it, I just let it go. Um, one year, thirty-four hundred dollars, a lot of money, pays for a lot of my expenses, guys, and, you know, and my, I just, you know, it's kind of, it's pretty saddening when I have, and I still pay the nonprofit more than that besides what we were short, so. It, it's a little frustrating, and my wife is really very upset about it, you know, so. I did this, I started this out for a reason. Started it out to try to get the young people involved in the community, and it has been very good for that. And like I said, I think the Brandon residents really enjoyed, if you go around and do a little bit of a, whatever you want to say, you can call as many people as you want, majority of them love it. I've lost, I will tell you, I've lost some really good volunteers, um, because they've been yelled and screamed at by people that don't like it. Um, I don't put up with that, to be honest with you, I shouldn't have to. You know, put hundreds of hours into it, and I will not put up with it anymore.
Yes.
It's not fair to us, and it's not fair to my volunteers when they come back and they almost have tears in their eyes because somebody's yelling and screaming at them. So...
I haven't witnessed that.
Well, you know, and I wish this every year, because I get dragged, I get dragged into it, you know, and, um...
You're the coordinator of it, you...
Well, exactly, and I can, you know, I'm a big, hey, I'm a big boy. You know, I've been around a long time, been around car business a long time, and, uh, you know, that's what I tell my wife, that's what I tell these guys, it's just the way things go sometimes. You know, you do the very best you can, and, uh, some people don't like the way we do it, but the majority of people do.
Well, and for that, I do wish you well. I, I just can't support it this year, though. And that's, and you know, I had the complaints last year too, and so this year, I'm just...
Joe, I'm, I'm gonna point out one thing. I could've given this community a big black eye, because I had proved there were funds missing. I did not do that. I let it go.
They also had their own version of it, so I heard both sides of it.
Certainly.
I heard your side, and I heard their side, so I understand that.
You bet.
And so, and we're gonna let that go for this year.
You bet, exactly.
But I'm just going to go with this year, and this year only, and that's my...
Hey, the bottom line is this, I guess, do you want Otomania Brandon in your community? You know, that's really the bottom line. It doesn't have to be here.
Yeah, I'm just one person on the...
No, I understand that, but I mean, that one person. We had people that were in tears last year that felt bad because of the comments that were made, you know, during this council meeting. Um, and they, they took them to heart, and I think if anybody needs to take any responsibility, it should just come to me only. I'm responsible, I write the checks, I do, you know, and not any of the volunteers or any of the other groups. That is what I would ask anybody down the road, and if you feel that Otomania does not do a good job for Brandon, let me know. You know, I don't need to work an extra three hundred hours a year. You know what I mean?
I'm just one person on the...
I'm, I'm just letting you know, Joe, I don't need to do it. I love cars, I love people, and we have a great time, and I just, you know, I feel bad for our volunteers, because a lot of them took it to heart last year, and they weren't very happy with things, so. Um, the majority of you guys, I appreciate the comments, you, what can we do for you? Appreciate that very much, and I don't think we ask a lot. We do the majority of it on our own, you know, and we don't ask rather than a little, you know, some of the assistance you give us, we don't ask anything special of the council other than that day and a half. We, we enjoy having it closed down a half a day early. It gives us the opportunity to organize a little bit and kind of get things set, we know where we're gonna be. And, uh, I don't care what time you put on your schedules, your posters, your information, it says one to eleven, it's never at one o'clock, you're busy at ten in the morning, nine in the morning, it's just the way it is. You know, some nights, I can't sleep the night before, I've been down here by the post office at three in the morning, because I couldn't sleep, and these guys get mad because I'm out there already, but just the way it is, you know. I'm a big boy, I will take any responsibility anybody wants, you know, I will.
Well, and now you know my opinion, so I, like I said, I'm just one person on the council.
I understand, but I, I certainly, and I appreciate the comments, I know where we're at with things. I've gone through very diligently with my distributors, and, uh, everything's been signed for. And, and that's why we're just trying to really make it a lot easier this year. That's really the bottom line, so we don't have any ill feeling somebody says something's not quite right, because, you know, the bottom line is, there's, you know, you can have a hundred people, oh, he just takes one person. You know, you don't know. And, you know, the, another ninety-nine are fantastic, don't misunderstand me, I'm normal, I, you know, you guys, I grew up out here, I graduated from school out here. I've been living in this community since nineteen sixty-three. How many of you lived out, I know you have, you said. How many of you guys have lived out here your whole life, you know, pretty much? You know? I had people accuse me of moving bran, Otomania Brandon, because I lived out here. That wasn't the case. It just, it happened to fit my gut feeling where I think Sioux Falls wasn't gonna work anymore. That's why we moved it out here.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Mayor, if I may. Um, with that said, and I don't at all disagree with Joe, but I'm gonna stand up and say I fully support you, Bill. Um, there's always gonna be a negative aspect, no matter what you do. There was one person that was perfect on this earth, and they crucified him. There's always gonna be a negative aspect, however, how that negative aspect is dealt with is truly the difference. And if there was truly that much discontent out there, um, whether that had been the council or whatever the case may be, you should have got those people into a room and talked. The rumor mill, the rumor mill has killed an awful lot of things on this earth, and I refuse to let the rumor mill do what you're doing for the city of Brandon. I've been down there every year, I've supported it every year, it's a wonderful event filled with smiles, childrens, puppies, you name it. Uh, and there's always going to be a negative aspect.
You bet.
Um, I appreciate you making the change that you did this year, because there has been some contention there. You, you've taken it on, and I fully support you, and I'm very, very glad that you're in the city of Brandon, so thank you, Bill.
Well, thank you very much. Like I said, the majority of, and I appreciate, don't misunderstand, I appreciate your comments, because, just like he says, everybody, there's always that one out there, and that's why I keep trying to convince my wife, you know, it just, it happens, so.
Well, we have to vote, I mean, we can vote, too.
Yes, we have to vote. It is a Resolution O nine seventeen that allows food, right, and merchandise, not alcohol.
It controls sidewalk vendors...
Yes.
Um, to not set up within six hundred and sixty feet of, at, or Holly.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor.
A motion from Jones, second by Fish, to approve Resolution O nine seventeen. Other discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Bill.
Hey, you're very welcome. Again, thank you so much, everybody, we appreciate it, and, uh, I think you'll find that, uh, Otomania will be very consistent at what it does. Brings a lot of people in, and we have a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Item E, I received a phone call from Linda Weber that she is going to resign from, like, sixteen years, seventeen years on planning and zoning. She has quite a bit on her plate right now, and she doesn't feel that if she stays on, she can give it her... If you know Linda, she jumps in with both feet and, and stays in there. So she called me and said, "We, we need to talk," and she resigned, and I didn't want to accept it, but nothing I can do. Well, I talked to Brian, and what I, we'd like to do is, is, is kind of do what we did when we, to kind of open it up. I, I, my list is very short on, on who I, I want to do it, but I would like to, to get a list and then talk to them and kind of have a mini interview with them and see what, what their plans are. Mr. Brooks?
There was a, a mention that we should, uh, put it out like we would trying to hire somebody new for a specific job, see who puts in for it, and then, then they can come in and, you know, chat with you, and whoever else needs to be involved in it, and then we can make that decision, because it's an appointment from the mayor, so...
It's an appointment right now, yeah.
And I can, believe me, I've been on, been with them not quite as long as she has, but, uh, I can appreciate, uh, the effort she's put into it, and, and I think it's a good idea, because we do need good people on there.
Yes.
No question about that.
Yes. Yeah, she's served the, the city very well, and she will continue to serve the city through the, the pantry, the food pantry, but she's got just a little bit more on her plate than she can add right now. So, again, I say the same thing as Mr. Brooks, I thank her for all her years of service to this community.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, Linda has been a, a solid, rock, the foundation of the city for a number of years, and I would like to, on the city's standpoint, do something special for her, uh, to thank her for her years of service, uh, and everything that she has done, so...
Yes. And that was also on my list, too, to talk about a proclamation, that, yes, very much, so. So what we will do is, I, I know that, uh, there's a P and Z meeting coming up next So, so what we will do is, I know that there's a P&amp;Z meeting coming up next month, but I don't know if I'll have an appointment by that time. But they will, I'm hopeful that it will be done before August. And hopefully, in my best intentions would be before their, their meeting on the 20th of July. Would be my best hope to get it approved on the 17th.
Do you need a motion to accept her resignation?
Yes, I do.
I'll make a motion to approve her resignation.
Second.
A motion from Hausmann, a second from Brooks to approve the resignation from Mrs. Weber from the planning and zoning. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And again, you know, I would publicly thank her for all she's done.
Mayor, so could we, I don't know what the dollar amount is, but say, could as a city we contribute $5,000 to the food pantry in her, not memory, but in recognition of her service? Because that's where she would want the money to go, I think. I don't know if we can do that, but.
I, that's something we're, we're discussing. Yep, we're, something to think about and do whatnot, but yes. Our last item, in item 10, we have an invoice for a sidewalk on Sioux Boulevard adjacent to Ponderosa Circle.
This was brought up at the last council meeting.
Yep, it was at the last council meeting.
Yep.
Mr. Smith was here.
Yep, a bill was submitted to the city from Natchez Concrete Inc. for 39, 3916 for a sidewalk that was put on on Sioux Avenue adjacent to the little Ponderosa subdivision. Mr. Smith mentioned resolution 4398, which is a resolution of necessity for the construction of Sioux Boulevard. In 1998, he referred specifically to a couple of things. But I would like you to see that, he wants us to pay for the sidewalk. He thinks that the city should pay for the sidewalk even though we didn't order it. He used this resolution of necessity that all contractors who undertake to perform the work of construction herein provided for shall be paid in cash for the sale of special assessment bonds. The work that was authorized under resolution of necessity 4398 was for water, sewer, street, curb and gutter improvements where needed. Does not mention sidewalk. That's on page 32. And then I'll refer to page 35. It's a copy of the minutes from the December 21st, 1998 council meeting. Down at the bottom of the page, property owners adjacent to, on the east side of Sioux Boulevard, request that the sidewalks not be constructed from Richmond Park Edition to Park Street. After lengthy discussion, I'm summarizing here, motion was made. The assessment will remain the same, which was $15, since we were not assessing for sidewalks anyway. The assessment will remain the same as indicated in resolution necessity number 4398. But when sidewalks are installed, they will be financed with city funds. And the council is not deter, above that, it says, this council will determine the need for sidewalks. Council never determined needs for sidewalks on the east side of Sioux. I never authorized Smith Construction to put in a sidewalk or indicated that the city would pay for it. No one on staff instructed Smith Development to put in a sidewalk. So thus, I denied the request for payment.
I think we're not solid in that position.
Do we need a?
Do anything?
Do we need a motion?
If you want to, you can make a motion to either approve or deny the payment.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
A motion from Jones, seconded by Fish to deny the payment to Smith Construction through the concrete company. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, anything else, administration? Okay. Item 11. The maintenance report is in front of us. Raleigh's sitting back there very quietly in case we need anything from him.
With that "oh-so-well-known" smirk on his face.
All right. We will continue our discussion of the intersection of Sandstone and Holly. I know many of you have expressed in the past two meetings this, and we definitely welcome your input. Is there anything else that we need to talk about?
Hello, my name is Blake Walden. I live in the Eagle Creek neighborhood. I'm just curious what sort of data has the city gathered about the intersection, traffic coming and going since the completion of the development?
You know, we did do an informal traffic count at one time, but that was several years ago. I'm sure traffic has probably increased since then. But we did have something.
Yeah, development wasn't done yet either. Dennis went out there.
You said.
Couple of years ago, we timed, it wasn't necessarily a traffic count. We didn't count cars, but we timed the intersection at Sandstone and Holly, how long it took to get out onto Holly. And that was a couple of years ago, I think. Well, at least, maybe three or four.
Yeah, so it's probably changed.
And it was, it was a minute to two minutes, about as long as it takes to, for the traffic light on, at Holly and Heritage to change. And that was during peak morning, morning hours. Engineer Sanal handed you, I hand out the first page, shows you the accident history going back to 2014. There's been eight accidents out there since January or December of 14. Number of vehicles with or without injuries, estimated cost of, or damage to vehicles. And a little bit, a little synopsis of what it was. Most of them were westbound, left turn, and they were rear-ended.
For what it's worth, for your information, like you said, eight accidents totaling about $100,000 worth. Most of them two-car, one-four, one-three car accident. Most of them over, all but two, or I guess all but three, over $10,000 in damage. Just FYI.
And that second, that second handout or the plan is from the traffic study that was done in 2009, which includes a full build-out, including turning lanes all the way out past, or for Arbor Ridge Road, the installation of a traffic light at Heritage and Holly. And then turn lanes and acceleration lanes at Sandstone and Holly.
Are there plans to gather more data? Or are we going to push forward with possibly a turning lane or stoplight or flashing light? I just would like the city to gather as much data so we can get something correct the first time and not run into the issue that we're having now.
Well, I'm certain, and if I'm talking out of turn here, please stop me. But with these type of improvements, these types of improvements would never be approved through the city without a traffic study. So, you know, where are we at with that traffic study? What does it take to get that traffic study done?
The traffic study from 09 is still valid. It wouldn't necessarily need to be a new one. We did, we did request some traffic counts from DOT. Although, to be honest with you, there appears to be anomaly.
Well, and I guess I'm going to rephrase, traffic study. I can guarantee you the count is not the same from 09.
Correct, no, it's increased. It's increased. But you got to remember that traffic study was looking at projected traffic counts out 20 years.
Right, right.
And that's where the full build comes from.
Yep.
So we can take a look and compare those to existing traffic counts that we have out there today.
I think the other thing that we need to talk about too is where we're at with that development of Holly moving out that direction. As far as, you know, where we're planning, what year, where are we at with that? I think that certainly plays a role in this.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak? Matt Henning, I just have a question. Has the council received or the city received any traffic study as to what's going to happen to the traffic on Holly Boulevard after Highway 100 gets finished all the way to the interstate?
Whether that study's been done or not, I will tell you that it's certainly going to play a huge role in what's happening. You know, Rice Street Pass, in my opinion, Rice Street Pass, SD 100 is no longer going to be an arterial route from the city of Brandon. But from the city of Brandon to SD 100 certainly will continue to be an arterial route, not to mention the traffic that will be coming off the Interstate Exchange from SD 100. So that is a very valid point.
There is, in the many plans the DOT has put out on this Highway 100, several of them show that Holly will end out and there will be a cul-de-sac and that's the end of it. You won't go that far. Then there are at least three that I've looked at that show Holly veering and changing to a southwest up over the hill and tying into Highway 100 to, to the west up over the hill, exact the spot. I'm not sure where that's at. That just depends on which chart you're looking at the DOT's put out. So that would give you the route to go out going to the west. You go up on top and either go north to the interstate and do what you want or go south and head down to the other way. But I haven't seen anything that's indicating that they're going to start on that part of it anytime soon. I know they're trying to get Highway 100 down to the interstate. I think they've got until the end of next year to do that. And we'll see what happens after that because they've already removed the houses that were on the west side or the north side of the river. I saw the last one sitting on wheels when I came home the other night. So that's going to be a lot of work going on down there.
The construction schedule, just to clarify, for Rice Street, Holly Boulevard and the connection to Highway 100, the intersection at Highway 100 and Rice Street will be connected and completed late this fall. So the new alignment that you can see where the dirtwork is being done is planned to be constructed and finalized this fall. The overpass, there's a large bridge, a structure that needs to be constructed. And then 60th Avenue will divert to the north. And then Redwood will tie in at an at-grade intersection as well, north of that structure. And that plans on, the plans for that and exit 402 are planned to be completed in 18 and 19. So that is moving forward.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be a congested area with, with construction and people trying to come in and out, yes.
And I think the other thing to realize too is this funding comes in annually. So it's not something that's funded from start to finish. So some of the construction that we have seen has been tied to funding. So we watch that, that funding every year. I'm sure it will come through, but it's always that piece that, that we sit and wait to see if it comes through.
Mark Rattanbo, again, I guess I'd go back to the simplest solution. We have a stoplight. We have turning lanes already there. Doesn't cost the city any money. It's there. We connect the two developments together with the plan the developer came forth, make the developer pay for it, not the citizens. He's the one that made the money. I'd like to know why we wouldn't do that. Why we wouldn't make that developer put that street in that he initially planned. Then we have our route out, because that's a county road out there. You guys don't want to take it over. It doesn't make fiscal sense to do that. We have the area to put that street in. Developer says, "No, I don't want to pay for it." We just accept that? That's my question.
And I'm going to be the first to say I agree with you.
Yeah, and we wanted that several years ago and we were looking at this. And I mean, I was also for it because I know what you guys go through out there. Yeah, but I, to be honest, I don't remember how that went down. I know we did the study with Dennis out there. And then, so I apologize, I don't even remember how it went down.
Well, we are fully aware and we have been fully aware and we are trying to come up with a solution. But unfortunately, we can't make a solution in five minutes or five days or whatnot. But the people up here are, are working because as some of us travel that way, some of us come home that way.
I guess I just asked the council to look in, if we could get an answer on whether that's going to become the taxpayers' cost for that developer. That's the question I, I need answered, I guess. Because I looked at it a lot up on Ashton Trail at the time I bought my lot and $10,000 difference, I thought, "I'll go here." Well, now if you're going to add $4,000, now suddenly I'm really wishing I'd have bought that lot up there. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Just to be clear, this, the brochure you had that came from the developer showing a route going through, is there anywhere in any writing that that was the, going to be the case from the developer? Other than the, I mean, there's a pictorial view of it. I would think that that would have some kind of validation in this argument.
Just the pictorial view and then his word of, or. We could go back to the original plat.
Yeah, we can go back.
The original plat was platted with that street.
No, yeah, I didn't think so. I didn't think there was.
I went through some brief history back to '03 anyway. Harlan Edition, the preliminary plan which showed Creekside as a through street was approved in March of '01. And then the Eagle Creek Development Plan, which was the cul-de-sac, was approved in April of '05. And I couldn't find anything. I've only gone back to '03 so far, but I can't find anything in at least the P&amp;Z minutes that would indicate a change, other than the preliminary or the development plan, which is part of the process, preliminary plan, and then it moves towards final plat. But the development plan that we approved as a city was in '05, which included the cul-de-sac. So I don't know what transpired in between.
Well, I'm going to stand up and say I stand corrected then, because that's not the information that I've had. And I've fought this from my very first day, sitting up here, as has Barb. This, believe me, we know what you guys are dealing with out there. I've tried to bring this to the forefront many times and I've just been shot down. So your voice is being heard. I expect you guys to, if we don't take this forward, then you come back to this meeting and say, "Why aren't you taking it forward?" So thank you. Thank you for coming forward. Thank you for bringing it to our attention again. I agree, something needs to be done.
Thank you.
If I may, so Blaine, you said the orig, you thought the original plot said that Creekside Circle would go all the way to the, to the bluffs?
The original plan that I saw, and that was before my time here, showed that street intersecting.
Okay, so.
It showed that it was there. Now, as far as what was approved, I guess I don't know.
We've, we've got this problem, but looking forward as new developments are built, is there a law or anything that the council can do that when a plot is set out by the developer, that the developer, you know, if, if the, you say the developer changed it without the council's notice, is there something that the council can do so this never happens again?
I'm going to push that, that question to Brian and Paul because I've asked that question many times myself. Because I cry foul when that happens. When we approve a plat and we approve a development, that's how we understand the development is going to move forward. Now, keep in mind, typically developments go in phases.
Right.
And sometimes they change. And I would agree that if something changes, especially something like that, a connecting street between two developments, that we should know. And in this particular opinion, I don't think we did.
Thank you.
What, what we currently do now as far as subdivisions, the developer submits a preliminary plan or concept plan, which is a very basic, somewhere between a sketch on a napkin and a formal plan. And then the next step is a preliminary plan which is adopted, reviewed by P&amp;Z, approved. And then it moves on to development engineering plans, which is full-blown, basically engineering plans with sewer and water. Preliminary plan also includes the location of those, but nothing in great detail. The final one is the plat. And the final plat comes in, and that's usually lot by lot. Now, if there's any significant changes to any of those, from the concept plan to the preliminary plan to the final plat, they got to go back and start over, the developer does. If there's minor changes to, you know, a lot width might change from 80 to 82 feet or something like that, we don't consider those major changes. But if it's a major change, that needs to go back and go through the process again. And those, those major changes need to be approved by planning and zoning.
So historically, Brian, and this is truly a question, has it always been that way? Or is it something that back in this stage of the game, would that change had to have been approved by the city? Where the street just disappeared?
Looking at it, it was. In '01, the preliminary plan, which is our concept plan now, we've renamed things because that's just more confusing. The preliminary plan did show Creekside going through and connecting with Heritage. But when the, when the development plan was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in April of '05, it was a cul-de-sac. Now, I can, I can't find anything in the minutes where there's a discussion as to why it was just preliminary plans approved or development plan was approved.
So all the property owners that would have purchased property out there prior to '05 would have thought and would have been told that there was a street going through. And if the developer hadn't come back and told you that, oh, now that street's gone, you certainly wouldn't have any way of knowing.
I have the unique perspective of I did the dirtwork to put those streets in. I know what the plan was. I've seen the plan. When I got this, that's what I bought from the gentleman, didn't do any work for him. Have the brochure, Meadowbrook's going through when that light gets put in. That's how these people are going to get out of here. Meadowbrook is the one that he said, yeah. Yeah, so that was the change from when Creekside went to cul-de-sac, Meadowbrook is the through street.
Can I ask you, who told you that?
Steve Van Busker. First, he also said I was going to have a bike trail from that park behind me all the way over to the Big C Rec area. We see how far that's went.
Chief, is it, is it possible to get some visible, more, more visibility out there? And if they're, if they're passing on the right-hand side, we've marked that. And, and start getting some tickets out there so people realize that we're serious about this, at least until we can figure out something else?
There is, there is a sign out there that says, "No, no passing on the, on the shoulder." And I can pretty much guarantee you, when I, when I put my squad car out there, people don't pass on the shoulder. You know, it's, it's, it's other times. Most of the accidents have not necessarily involved people trying to pass on the shoulder. What the accidents or the crashes involve are vehicles trying to make a left-hand turn and there'll, there'll be some, you know, there might be just one car stacked up. There might be four or five cars stacked up and someone comes along that's not paying attention. And they crash into the back of them at, at speed. They're not trying to get over onto the shoulder. And so, it's not necessarily the passing on the shoulder that's, that's causing the crashes. It's, it's, it's inattention.
But could we have somebody out there during the peak hours, you know, when you see a police car, you pay more attention? And maybe that would even help on the, the turning lane?
The difficult part there is, is where we would park oftentimes is where the, the dental office is or on the side street. If we park on the side streets, then we kinda congest things there. Going to the east, it's, I'll have to look at it again, see if we've got any field entrances. But it's, it's a timing issue also. So, it's...
I'm just thinking like in the morning and evening, the peak hours.
Yeah. When people aren't paying attention, they're just not paying attention. They're looking at their phone. They're looking at the, you know, adjusting the radio dial or they're just thinking about their coffee. I, you know, I, I wish that everybody would drive aware of the things around them. And all those, all eight of those accidents or crashes were, were due to the inattention. It's not following too close. It's, it's just not being aware of the road conditions ahead of them.
What does WB mean?
What's that?
What does WB mean?
Westbound.
Oh, westbound.
Yeah. There were, there were a couple of other accidents in that, in that area that weren't necessarily, well, there, there was one that was eastbound, person turning into the, into the development and slid on the ice. I did not include those in that report. We had a couple of accidents that were in that area, but they weren't related to that intersection. They were, it was traffic that was backed up from Heritage. And, and again, inattention.
I guess I would just ask you to see if there's possibility of doing something during those peak hours until we try to see if we can come up with some sort of a solution.
Maybe get a little more presence or something, you know, even driving, you know?
Yep.
Not even tarp, just driving.
Yep.
Yeah, I drive out there every day.
Yes. I, I see them out there. When I'm out there, I see them. And we will continue to work on this. I, whatever we have to do, I, I assure you, the, the people up here are going to try to solve this for you.
Maybe, Chief, we could get that banner that the chamber put out with you waving and sit out there and just say...
My favorite.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Anything else? Anything else?
Real quick, I, I would be interested if you could get me a copy of that that you brought. I will, I've got some ideas and, but I'd like to start with a copy of that. If you could just drop it off at the city and I can, I can capture it. That'd be appreciated.
One other quick question. Simple, easy fix. I know it's a county road, but Paul, do you think there's enough room for three lanes through there with the road surface we have? If you just, 36 feet, 12, three lanes?
We could take a look at it, but when you're, when you're talking about adding, I'm assuming what you mean is sort of a right through so people can actually go around. If you had somebody sitting in that, they would be wanting to turn left. And you see those on county roads where it would allow a vehicle to swerve and go around on the right side. I still think we would have to add some tapers to that. I don't know that we have enough room. Certain, I mean, it's certainly something we could look at instead of just adding turn lanes. But it would, anything that we do there, we, we'd wanna take a very close look at the existing geometrics and the conditions, the speed, and make sure that we're not creating even worse situations for the commuters in that situation. Which I think, again, requires, you know, an extension of, like Brian said, this, this traffic study that we had was done in 2009. And it indicated the, the delay times and the level of service that are acceptable in that area, which at that time, it was a level of service B and C, A being the best, F being the worst. And when you look at projections on traffic and, and traffic volumes and, and delays and things like that, that indicate a time period where we should potentially look at something further down the road. A traffic signal was not, even as a part of that study, a traffic signal was not a consideration to be something that would be warranted at that intersection just because of the vicinity of the one that was planned at Heritage. In fact, Tyler, which is now Heritage, I believe, to the west.
Arbor Ridge.
Arbor Ridge. Those, all three of those intersections were looked at as a part of that study. And just because of the distance between those three intersections, Heritage is, was the intersection that made the most sense to put the signal. My point is, is that traffic study is still valid. There was some indication that the level of service in 2019 would potentially warrant some expansion of Holly Boulevard to add additional lanes. And so, you know, we're approaching that, what as a part of that study indicates, two years from now. But, you know, that's, that's Holly. That's what I know we're talking about. In my opinion, two things that involve the Eagle Creek subdivision and access in and out of that, and Meadow Brook is obviously the other one. So, I think in some sense, we're talking about two different things, but getting traffic to Heritage to the signal would certainly be something to look at.
Yeah. Check that out for us. Wait, please. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, streets?
Um, he goes, "No."
All right.
Nope. Nothing else.
Item 12. We have bids for HMO feed system in water treatment plant.
Good evening. Brent Anderson with Stockwell Engineers.
Good evening, Brent. We've been waiting.
I'm sorry. Yes. Hope I didn't offend anybody with my jackrabbit. I knew it. There's gonna be some coyotes on the council. Yeah. I asked John, "Should I go home and change?" And he said, "No, it's fine." So, anyway, we opened the bids on 13th of June for the water treatment improvements, the HMO feed system. We had one bid from Gilhagen Construction in Sioux Falls for $278,100. Obviously, Gilhagen's a very good contractor and it was within the engineer's estimate. So, we are recommending approval.
How come we only got one bid? What do you think?
Busy.
Busy?
Yeah. I think it was kind of a unique, smaller project. And, yeah, we made a lot of calls, so a lot of people were aware of it, but they were the only ones that came. But we still feel like it's a, a good bid.
It's a good bid.
Yeah, because our estimate was too thin.
I will tell you that the contractors right now aren't very hungry. They are so busy that they can't take the work that they're getting. So, I think that's probably why.
Yep. Thank you.
You discussed it last week. I may make a motion.
Motion from Wells, second by Fish to approve the bid from Gilhagen for the HMO feed system in the water treatment plant. Questions or discussion?
When will they start?
Wednesday.
Right away. They wanna start right away.
Good.
Yeah. I mean, we, it'll be several weeks, but, yep, as soon as possible.
Okay. With that being said, I have a motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Resolution 0817, lowering the water connection fees to offset contractors' costs for the SDC charges.
While we were discussing the SDC issue over a course of a few meetings, if you're, not to bring up bad memories, but if you remember, we, we kinda divvied up the cost, the base cost, the $2,400 base cost, $600 per parcel to a plating fee, $600 for the base meter to, at the time, the, the water meter is pulled. And then, the city would pick up, at least currently, $1,200 of that SDC charge. We, so we implemented those changes a month ago now? Two months? Well, it was two months ago now. We increased the sewer, the sewer rates 27 cents at the last council meeting to offset the city's share. We also talked at the time of when we were splitting that cost up to reduce the, the impact to the contractors, the people pulling the building permit to what, to the level that they're paying now. Part of, one of the costs they pay now is a $1,000 connection fee for a typical residential meter. If we reduce that down to $400, it would be a wash for the contractors with the SDC charge. They will not pay anything more than what they've been paying through the last few years.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion from Wells, second by Jones to approve Resolution 0817, lowering the water connection fees to offset the contractors' costs for SDC charges. Discussion. If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Very good. Moving on. We have a conditional use permit for the West Tower.
We have an application going in early next week for a conditional use permit for the West Water Tower on property currently owned by Excel Energy that we approved a purchase agreement last meeting. So, this will be going in on probably Tuesday or Wednesday to make it onto their July schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Hausmann, second by Wells to approve conditional use permit to the county for the West Tower. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Anything else? Water sewer?
Oh, he said?
Just wanted to reiterate that there is a watering ban on in town.
Restriction.
Restriction. Excuse me. Not a ban. Don't know all the vocabulary yet, so. Yeah, we were over 1.9 million. Our well ran 50 hours nonstop, shut off for 17 minutes and then ran another 37 and a half hours.
Oh, my goodness.
So, that was last week. This week, it's kinda come down some, somewhat. We're down to about 1.5 million.
So, Rolly, what does that, what does that mean?
Our plant can produce 2.1 million in a day. If we're pumping 1.5 million out, we're losing ground.
What, what are the restrictions?
It's even odd.
Yeah, even odd and then the, the big restrictions that affect most people in town, even odd watering and then don't water between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM. We have...
We're handing out flyers daily.
It's on Facebook. It's on the website. We're handing out flyers.
I just wanna remind everybody.
There are other ones. There are other practices. Don't fill a swimming pool that doesn't have a recirculation pump on it. Don't wash vehicles and driveways. You can wash them at commercial car washes. Don't wash buildings. But the, the main thing that we're pushing is the watering restrictions.
Especially from 10 o'clock till 6:00 because...
It's not doing any good.
Couple of weeks ago, when it was 90-plus degrees and the sprinkler was on at noon, the water's evaporating. It's not going down into the grass anyhow. All you're doing is just wasting the water.
Here, if I may, Brian, what were the parameters that we set that we, before we would go from voluntary to mandatory?
We went, we went right to mandatory this year.
Yes.
1.6 million gallons per day for three days in a row.
Yep.
And we hit that last week.
We did that like a month ago.
Yep.
My question, if we'd gone to mandatory, are we enforcing it?
Right now, what we're doing is, the, the first couple of weeks, we're handing out flyers just to let people know. If we get repeat offenders, then there's, then there's some consequences. You know, we can charge them a surcharge. We can go so far as to turn off their water.
Well, knowing that we're at capacity and certainly thinking about our, you know, our fire risk, we need to be able to make sure that we're able to put out any type of structure fire that we have in the city. And if we're getting that close, it would certainly be my hope that we're, we're enforcing that mandatory. The last thing in the world I wanna see is a large structure fire in Brandon and we're sucking mains close because we can't get enough water to it.
Yep. It was discussed last meeting too. About the same words I said, Mr. Jones. So, thank you for reiterating that. Yep. Thanks, Rolly.
One other thing I was just gonna mention on the street side, I guess Paul's had the contractors out doing the curb and gutter repairs. I believe most of those are done today.
They're all done, yep.
We are in the process of doing all the asphalt repairs by them and the dirtwork will come after that, so.
Good. Thanks.
Moving along.
Thank you. Any other business before council?
Do we have executives?
I will, I will entertain. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Woo-hoo.
I have a motion from Jones, second by Brooks for adjournment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.